Good morning, everybody. So this morning, we were going to first walk through the recommendations from the housing group and decide if those, how you guys feel about those, and if those are going to Planning Commission or to City Council. And then we're going to talk about accountability moving forward. If we want to stick with one accountability committee or move towards a different structure. And then Andy asked us to discuss, kind of at the end of our meeting, probably with the land use group, the charrette process. And if we could give them a recommendation on whether we think development strategies, who put together the white paper, should also be allowed to bid on the charrette process coming up. So we're probably going to roll that into the beginning of the land use group meeting, since I know those folks are pretty invested in the charrette process as well. So give me a second to share my screen. And we'll look at those housing recommendations. All right. So I hope you guys had a chance to look at this. I know it came out late yesterday, but they just finished this up Monday afternoon. So I've included the original Clemson Next recommendations, which for them were really in three categories: affordable housing, neighborhood preservation and enhancement, and then facilitating student and non-student housing. And because the land use group was really working with the catalyst areas and student housing definitions, this group, although they had a lot of opinions on that, this first set of recommendations from them does not include anything related really to university housing or the catalyst areas. Those will have to come from the land use group or from a different group moving forward. And if you guys have questions or thoughts as we go through, please let me know. So their recommendations, under affordable housing, they do want to be involved in the discussions about catalyst areas because they do think affordable and workforce housing should be incorporated into the catalyst areas using PDs and public funding where needed. And they also agreed with the white paper recommendation to establish a housing trust fund. I think one of the things that, if we agree with this one going forward, we'd have to, the city would have to decide is whether that's established through the city itself or the Shaw Center. And that would support affordable housing development and accelerate the Shaw Center's work. The third, they changed a little bit. What they want to recommend to council is to continue to explore opportunities to facilitate increased affordability in single-family neighborhoods through the zoning code. And what they changed from the original one was they took out promoting smaller lot housing in single-family neighborhoods. So they just, I think, did not want to be that specific with their recommendation. And then they added number four here. There was a discussion in this work group about how some of our surrounding communities had more land available and greater opportunities for the creation of affordable and workforce housing. And maybe one of our strategies going forward is to partner with those areas and make sure there's transit and transportation to support the creation of those communities in some of our surrounding jurisdictions, but then people, to help people get in and out of the Clemson area. Do y'all have any thoughts, questions, concerns about that first group of recommendations?
So just in general, then, I would think that any one of them that talks about development, zoning, those would have to go to the Planning Commission, right? Catalyst areas for some process of actual approving or developing what those zoning codes would look like. But at this stage, it, we would just have to, we would just have to approve it or would Planning Commission have to do anything with them right now?
I'm going to defer to Elaine on that. I think these are general enough that Planning Commission could move them forward to City Council, but then come back and revisit how they want to do that. But Elaine, are you on here? Could you comment?
Yes, I agree. I think we can, they're not very specific yet. And I've matched up some of them with stuff that's already in the comp plan, so that's a good thing.
So with these four, I'm going to ask the Planning Commission folks on this specifically. So Elaine, Brad, Larry, are you comfortable with these going forward to Planning Commission in June as kind of information only?
Yes.
With the transportation?
Yes.
Yes.
Fine.
Okay, sounds good.
Elaine, I was just going to ask you, what do you think? How do you think it's going to go looking at changing higher density in, you know, existing single-family neighborhoods? Yeah, I've read a lot about that around the country. I'm just curious how you think that's going to be received or Planning Commission. It sounds good in theory. I just wonder how much pushback you're going to get. I don't know if anybody's really thought about that yet.
Are you talking about against infill or stand against infill? I'm not sure exactly what you're asking me, Tom.
Well, and I may not be sure of what I'm asking, but I know one of the recommendations is, hey, try to create more affordable or workforce housing, more density within a single-family zoning district. And I don't know if that's, like you say, if that's just infill or if that's a new area. Because obviously, we don't have, Clemson doesn't have a whole lot of new areas. So I just know, talking to a couple of residents at one point, they were concerned. You know, if there are 20 and then we go to R6 or R8, and will that become student housing? Those were questions I, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Well, and the concern with this workforce committee was that just taking a lot like mine and dividing it into three lots or whatever and putting more houses in here, there won't be affordable houses. So that was our, if it's not, if it's not doing something that we can move forward with ensuring that we have some affordable and workforce housing, then I don't think, we didn't address it then. That's going to be our focus.
Okay, that's what I thought. You know, I've been, obviously, I've been in about half those meetings. And I remember, I remember some of that, so that's perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Elaine, I just, I just saw a chat from Andy. I probably should know this, but tell me a little bit more about the Shaw Center group, the funding of it, who's on it?
Okay.
If there's a housing trust fund, would that be tax dollars, check-offs on donations? What, so what is the Shaw Center? And then what would be a housing fund approach, you think? And Andy, I think his chat suggested it's the money go through the Shaw Center. That's why I brought this up.
Okay, the Shaw Center is a, we're waiting final approval for nonprofit status. The intent is to, at least initially, start to bring some houses almost into, you could almost say it from barely livable into, excuse me, into something else. So it's a, it is a nonprofit. We don't have any kind of revenue stream right now. In fact, I think we have $1,100 in our account. So we've got to get started with some ways to accept donations and do fundraisers and all of that kind of stuff. But the intent is to go into, I'm telling you, there's six houses on John Fulmer's list right now, six or seven. And one of them is a home for an 85-year-old man, and he does not have a tub or shower and has not had for years. So he's doing sponge baths. Another one has a problem with her kitchen floor, an elderly lady as well with her kitchen floor. So some of them, we don't really know if they're going to be big-time infrastructure part of the house or if it's just some not-quite-so-detailed things we can fix to bring it up to speed for them. So that's what that is. Now, I don't know how it would tie in with a housing trust. And I don't know whether it's, I guess that's where, if you charged a fee to these developments, that's, that's where it would go.
So I talked with John Fulmer about this yesterday. So right now, the Shaw Center is really just helping homeowners with repairs. What other cities do is they use a housing trust fund, which is either administered through the city or through a separate nonprofit. And they put funds in there for that housing trust fund to do the repairs like they're doing, but also to buy and make available workplace and affordable housing. And they're the administrators of those. So he indicated that he thought that was where the Shaw Center could go, is to move towards being that housing trust fund. But that's a decision that has to be made at some level. I'm not sure if it has to be, I mean, I don't think we have to, we can add it to this recommendation right here, or maybe that's separate discussions between the Shaw Center and the city as far as those housing trust funds do come with administrative work and operation costs and things like that. But how do you move forward with that? Ken?
Yes, I think, I was asking a question. I came on a few minutes late. So we're looking here at these recommendations. Are they, do we use a template from some other location for these? Or what exactly did we?
So these recommendations at the beginning of this document, these were the ones that were assigned to this Affordable Housing and Workforce Housing Group from the Clemson Next strategic plan. These are the, at the first page, these are the original ones from the plan. And just like the traffic committee, the housing committee looked at those, decided which ones they wanted to support, not support, or revise in some way. And so now we're looking at the revisions they've made that they'd like to send to Planning Commission and council to be adopted.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Fran, Robert posted the guiding principles from the Shaw Center documents in the chat box as well.
Okay, thanks, Elaine.
So based on that discussion, are you guys still comfortable with leaving number two as pretty general, just that we should establish a housing trust fund? Or do you want to make it more specific that we establish a housing trust fund through the Shaw Center?
I don't know enough about what the difference would be, Shannon. I guess we'd have to decide.
I don't think we've thought it through enough to make that decision.
Yeah, I agree.
So we'll leave this general. The committee thinks it's a good idea to look into establishing a housing trust fund, and we'll figure out those steps moving forward. Is everybody okay with that?
I think the biggest thing you're going to need to work out is how to implement the funding source. And the way I see that going is you require developers to, you give them a choice where they can include some kind of affordable housing element in their project, or they could pay a fee in lieu of to get around it. And then that way, we put the money, we can get affordable housing benefit either way. Gives a developer options and all of those things to look at to see what might be the best approach.
And the committee, the housing committee, just started to talk about that in their meeting on Monday at the end of the meeting, different ways. They just started looking at the rental housing fee and policy, and then also some sort of voluntary inclusionary housing.
So I think, I think another reason maybe to not specify Shaw Center or even City number two is then, if it's in there, then you really have two things to fight about, not fight about, two things to decide on. One is the establishment of the trust fund, and two, what is the best home for that? So it might be easier to sort of establish a trust fund in the optimum situation or some such thing, and not hang this on the decision of should the city be the conduit? Should Shaw Center, should the Greenville Housing Authority? I think it just avoids two discussions and maybe loses focus of the main point. And so not worry about who, but focus on the what we're recommending at this point.
Everybody agree with that? We'll just take that out, and the recommendation will be to establish a trust fund.
Shannon, my guess is, we'll probably be told who has to do that. There's probably some legal funding mechanism that's going to require it being one or the other.
Okay. In that case, Andy, are you comfortable with just leaving this general?
Yeah, I just, you just want to have a trust or not at this point.
Okay. All right, any other thoughts on that before we move on to neighborhood preservation?
Just quickly, then, are you going to delete the part about accelerating the Shaw Center's work or make that a separate one? And what do we want to do with that?
Well, I think, I think we could leave that in there because that would be maybe one of the goals of the housing trust fund. So the housing trust fund would be developed to support affordable housing development and accelerate the Shaw Center's work. That's what we want the trust fund to do. Or is that confusing?
This is Ken. I also think that leaving that there suggests collaboration between whomever and the Shaw Center. And, you know, the mission in part of the Shaw Center is development of affordable housing in the community. So I think that will suggest collaboration between whoever oversees the housing trust, if it's established, to support the work of the Shaw Center.
All right, Fran, Andy, anybody? Other comments on that? We'll leave the Shaw Center in there then as part of the goal, but we will take out, trying to decide where that housing trust fund lives. So the next area of recommendations they looked at were around neighborhood preservation and enhancement. And their four recommendations are to develop and implement a grassroots neighborhood planning effort with several of Clemson's historically African-American neighborhoods, and then make that available to all neighborhoods in the city. To use zoning and overlay districts to prevent displacement in residential areas and improve quality of life. To dedicate funds for implementation of infrastructure projects identified through the neighborhood planning effort. And to hire a community development director to strengthen partnerships between neighborhood planning processes and plan implementation. Thoughts on any of those?
I think the previous discussion of the trust can kind of play into here because our community development fund is going away. Our home loans and the housing trust fund could also be used for matching funds for CBVG grants. That would be the mechanism you would use for a lot of these neighborhood projects. But you wouldn't want to pay staff necessarily out of them because it's not going to be as reliable funding store, regular. And you would eat it all up real fast. I'll leave it for doing work.
So other thoughts on these? Or are you guys comfortable moving these on to Planning Commission?
This is, am I muted? I can't tell where.
I can hear you, Larry.
I remember the discussion we had several months ago now about the hiring of these various new staff people. And I'm a little uncomfortable with putting this in here, hire a community development director. I don't, and Elaine and Fran and those of you, Tom, I don't think we really felt, at least a few months ago, felt that was an absolute decision, action that we wanted to take. Am I wrong, or did we decide we wanted to do that? Anybody?
I think, Larry, and I'm really not sure about this. The part of our discussion was, I think the white paper had three, maybe three different hires.
Right.
I think there was a sense of, it's sort of maybe premature to decide that until we have a better sense of what we're adopting from the Clemson Next plan. And that they may not be necessary, they may be very necessary, but I'm not sure that we were ready to say that. But maybe this is the point, where I think if the housing group, Elaine, really thought that that was an absolute crucial, cannot do this without that person, then this might be the right time to put it. On the other hand, if it was, this might be a good idea. Because I guess part of my reaction to this is, what's being proposed here is a very expensive plan in terms of all the cost, and housing is expensive. But again, I would hate the expense to prevent any progress whatsoever. So at some point, maybe it's prioritizing the list. But I think that my only concern with the director is, is it absolutely essential to do this? Or is that one of those things that, as the project evolves, it may be important, and this person might have multiple duties?
Maybe if we could expand and think more deeply about the responsibilities of this person, I'd be more comfortable with having that clearly identified as an action. Right now, I, I am uncomfortable committing the annual funds for a community development director when I think maybe those funds could be used more effectively on, you know, individual projects, repairs, et cetera, within the existing neighborhoods. I'm not sure. I just don't know. And I'm not sure what this person, what value, what added value would this person bring that would justify a full-time salary?
So the housing committee, they didn't say it had to be full-time. But their discussion was, when they started discussing these grassroots neighborhood planning efforts to create neighborhood plans for a lot of the historical African-American neighborhoods, but then all, having that available, those planning tools available to every other neighborhood as well, they realized that that's going to need to be facilitated by someone. That's not going to be completed as a volunteer process. So that is what they were thinking this person would do, and that this person would also be bringing to the city, so this number three on the list, infrastructure projects identified through neighborhood planning, that that person would also be bringing that to the city, figuring out how to fund those. So those were some of the duties that the committee discussed that role having. Fran and Andy?
So maybe, though, the answer is bigger than what you just described. Maybe at the end of this whole process, we'll decide to go like the Athens program has gone, which actually hired a full-time director, is my understanding, to implement all of the components and to follow up on all the components in terms of funding and carrying through. So maybe, maybe what we're going to end up doing is hiring a full-time Clemson Next implementation director, and their portfolio would include this piece as opposed to unique to this piece. Because really, that piece really does have connections between housing and transportation and land use and just all the aspects of the plan. So maybe it's not, maybe, maybe the answer at the end is not going to be a community development director. Maybe it's going to be the Clemson Next implementation director, including this piece.
What if instead of hire, oh, go ahead, Andy, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, we hire an assistant administrator, this is what they would do.
Maybe take the title out of that, and maybe it's create a role within the city or something like that, where it could be additional.
Dedicate staff resources to doing that work. But I mean, it's in the budget to hire an assistant. And I'm just looking at all this stuff, and that's all things that they do.
I do, I do think it's important, Fran, like you say, to tie it all together because, you know, having affordable housing is hard if you don't have a transit solution. All this revolves around what we're doing with student housing. So it all ties together. So I think you definitely need somebody, you know, the committee suggesting somebody, maybe not saying it's full-time or whatever, but I think you have one person that, that kind of, kind of views the Clemson Next, the white paper, everything that we've done, and they implement everything and connect it. That way, you're spreading the cost out. And if it can be done by the city, even better.
Ken?
Yes, I think, thinking more broadly about this item four, it talked about partnerships and neighborhoods and planning. I think part of the larger picture is developing, having someone to help develop trust in these communities and in these neighborhoods. So being a contact, a conduit to the city. But the idea is sort of to strengthen those partnerships and neighborhood involvement in planning, you know, how neighborhoods view their communities and what they would like to see, but having some conduit with the funds and, you know, the city or whatever entity is, the planning, that sort of thing. So the idea of having these partnerships and strengthening those partnerships and building trust with communities and neighborhoods.
Okay. That was part of what their discussion was as well, is why this would be, I think that's why they were thinking this as a separate person. Andy, do you have anything you want to add?
I was just going to say that the assistant administrator is basically a department head. It doesn't have a department. And the reason for that is that that person's main role is to facilitate projects that require coordination between several departments, like transit and landing and things like that. They coordinate that stuff. And when I was in the assistant role, I did do what Ken said. You spent a lot of time building relationships with people in neighborhoods and project areas like this. And you can really develop some, I mean, that's just part of the role and part of the expectation. And we're talking about, you know, going out of the way a little bit, really trying to help and care. I think such a widget does exist, but if, you know, that's my, that's my, that would be my recommendation for not to hire, develop an entirely new position, but just make sure our assistant hire is able to do this sort of thing. That's where that planning background comes in as well.
Okay. Guys, we have a couple minutes left, and we have two recommendations to look at. Real quick, are you comfortable with sending these four to Planning Commission if we delete, hire a community development director, and instead just say dedicate city staff resources? Have any dissension on that? Okay. The last two, the first one is the same as in the Clemson Next program. It's to continue to utilize and strengthen the rental housing program as a tool for mitigating the encroachment of student rental into all residential neighborhoods. So pretty straightforward. They want to take a look at that rental housing program and the policy and see if there's anywhere they can add some teeth or if there's anything we can, we can update within that. The second one is brand new. It is develop and implement a process to maintain an accurate database for a quarterly regional census on student housing capacity and planned occupancy. So they would like a database, a regional database, if at all possible, of what's the student housing capacity, what's the planned occupancy per quarter, and have a process in place for keeping that updated so that the city would have snapshots of, of what the planned occupancy is and capacity is at any point in time.
Dan, and this is Todd. Elaine and Catherine and Andy and I met Jake on Friday to go over this. We've been doing a version of this for several years now, and we don't do it quarterly. And that, that is constantly being refined. There was some information that Catherine brought to bear the other day about some information she got about the percentage of tri-county students that was different than what we had assumed. And as a result, we're going to adjust our assumptions we made about the non-students living there. But this, this database is, the inventory of units is pretty accurate. I'd say within a few percentage points. We've spent a great deal of effort validating exactly how many units exist. Uh, and and what we've accomplished that monitoring what gets added to the inventory is pretty easy. We have accurate numbers on enrollment uh of the different universities. And we have accurate numbers of how many other students are living on their campuses. Uh, and we have. As accurate as they can provide us their projected growth rates for um for all three, for tri-county tech, SWU and Clemson University. Tend to update this every other, every semester twice a year because not much changes. For three months in between. Um, it it really is, it's more of a semester driven kind of thing, at least the way we've been doing it. Here is the wild card and and Elaine uh and Catherine and Andy and I talked about it on Friday. Is that it is very difficult to determine exactly who is living in all these apartments. That um, uh, Tom can speak to it, but we have not found any large apartment complexes. They can tell us we have eight hundred and twelve beds and three hundred and sixteen of them are Clemson students. And two hundred are tech students and the rest of them are not. They just don't have that information. And the only way to get it is antedoteally or um through knocking on doors and asking, are you a student or not? Um, we, we're exploring ways to strengthen that number. But there is, we we currently have an accurate database of what the existing inventory is. Of rental beds in the Clemson area, uh, and that includes, you know, Pendleton, Central. Portions of Oconee County. We don't go past um. And going out towards Seneca. We do not include Seneca, but we include the pier and the High Point and all that. Anyway. So we have that in place and um and based on our meeting on Friday, I think that. Um, we found some ways to improve it and uh and will continue to do that. The the big difference between what is posted here and what we are doing that I would need clarity on. Is this quarterly versus semi-annual um update because uh that. I don't know we would get any new information because there's no, there're rarely any lease changes mid semester. There's rarely new enrollment numbers mid semester. And most houses or rental properties come online in the same month of August of every year. And so new inventory gets added then. So anyway, that's just uh uh some feedback for the group as to what we have on that already. And uh I'll just take direction as to what you're gonna do different and and um. What your expectations are from staff so we can meet them.
Well, are you all okay with that still being a general recommendation? We can change that to semi-annual. Fran, do you have?
Just just very quickly, I'm fine with that, but I guess I would suggest a number three to this, um, which would be an inventory. And maybe annually of affordable housing. I I have no idea how much affordable housing there is. And if we expand it to Central and Clum- uh Pendleton and the other areas, which is great. But I I don't, I don't know that it wouldn't be worth an annual affordable housing report. Uh, or at least an initial data analysis of how much affordable housing is in out there. Where is it? What's the price range? Kind of thing that could be updated annually. I think we we lack that data and I think that might be a useful. Um, uh, suggest recommendation coming out of this, just to, just to have that and then let it grow from there. Just a thought.
Think that's in line with what the committee has discussed and kind of where they were were going. Um. Elaine, are you, do you have any issues with adding that? I think the committee would be okay with that.
Yeah, very much. Uh, I want to go back to the one before about the the quarterly and semi-annual. I don't think we really had a, uh, that was just thrown in there. I don't think we really had an intensive discussion about that's exactly the time it needed to be. So.
Okay. Are you all comfortable with sending these three to planning? Ken?
I just, I'm sorry, I just posted in the chat a question uh in response to Todd's comments. I'm curious legally, could the lease agreement be modified to ask the question whether the resident is a student or not? To sort of get an idea of, you know, how many students, yeah, and you know, how how far we could go. I mean, in terms of what university and and all of that.
And um that this is a, this, I believe this is gonna be an accurate answer, but uh I'm not an attorney. Uh, yes, it is legal to ask that question. It is not legal for the city to require them to ask that question. We can't force a landlord. To tell them what is going to be contained within their contract. So we can't, we could encourage it. And that's one of the things we talked about was trying to get some of the property owners and landlords to be partners in this. And ask if they would track that. Um, and I mean, we took it to the next level, Ken, to say, all right. You've got uh the pier and High Point, there are fifteen hundred leases over there. They're asking that question, who is actually going to retrieve that data and organize that data and provide it? And so then the next step would be getting the, you know, they're certainly not going to share the leases though, you know. And that um, you know, depending on how it's set up, you know, is somebody gonna then spend the time to spit that data out to us? But that that's a fair question and a great idea and, you know, we're looking into it. And what we expect is we will get some some cooperation from some landlords. And probably others will just say, we're not comfortable asking or not comfortable tracking or not. Trump comfortable giving you that data. Uh, but the answer to your question, uh, it's legal to ask, but it's not legal to require.
Great. Well, what brought that question to mind for me is some of the materials, I guess we haven't had an opportunity to go through, but. The Chapel Hill materials, they uh with their uh Good Neighbor Initiative. They worked to develop a partnership between the private apartment complexes. And the university and the city. So I mean, they put some work in in terms of a building relationship, establishing a partnership. And some of these things uh are not seen as enforcement or whatever, but through that partnership and the trust that's built. Then they partner with, you know, the city and the universities to be able to get these kinds of things and build a relationship between. The university, the students and the neighborhoods where they are in. So I think that this is part of, I think, the larger conversation about that.
Okay, guys, uh, so are you all comfortable with sending all these to planning commission for June? Okay, planning Elaine, Larry, Brad. Excellent. I'm gonna stop our recording for just a second and we're gonna resume as a land use. Meeting. And now we're gonna restart as the land use and development group meeting. Welcome, everybody.
Morning.
Okay, um, we have one kind of thing we're gonna add to the beginning of our agenda this morning. Andy brought it to us. It is, city council is considering bids for. The charrette process. So the Uptown District, the charrette process and. The previous city council, when they hired development strategies to. Conduct the Clemson next process. Um, and Andy or Fran, jump in if I get this wrong. Had thought, had tried to make it so developments, okay, I'm not even gonna go there. I'm gonna say this, do you think it's worthwhile to allow development strategies to bid on? To be in the bid process for the upcoming charrette process? Or do you think it would be beneficial to the process to? Not include development strategies in that bid process and bring in another firm? Did I get that right, Fran and Andy?
Yes, without the whole history, yeah, that's, that is great.
Yeah, that um, the council said they couldn't, they that whoever was awarded the the white paper job. Wouldn't be eligible for future work because what they didn't want was a plan that suggested another plan. Uh, they wanted a a true deliverable. They didn't want someone to build in another mechanism for them to. Uh, add on to their contract. That was the purpose of it. And um council did ask, cause there were some concerns that if we, cause we want to do things quickly. How much, would there be any kind of time implication on bringing in someone else for the cause of delay? How long does it take them to catch up and get their feet under them? So John Fulmer suggested, why don't you call Boudreau? Cause they were, they were the company that came in a close second in the bid process. And I spoke with Heather Mitchell over there and she said. Uh, she kind of just kind of talked through her schedule and turned out to be eight to ten weeks, which is actually. A few weeks shorter than the proposal we received from development strategies. I didn't ask her how much it would cost, but I got a feeling it would probably be less with them. And then I all, even though that's not really my prime motivator in it, but um. I also asked her, so what if you found out that you guys had philosophical differences with the white paper in some areas? How would you handle that if it were to arise? And she said, well, first of all. Um, it's a charrette, so the outcome of the charrette would. Show any differences in opinion between the white paper and what the public and council is looking for. So she wasn't really concerned about that, just because the nature of the work that they would be doing. So there, that's all the information I have, I believe, uh, for y'all to mull over. And I mean, this isn't y'all's decision, it's council's decision. And it's on their agenda for Friday. When they have their budget work session and um. I thought it would be helpful to them if you guys were able to chime in and give them a recommendation or an opinion.
Fran?
So act, this is actually a question for Christine, um, based on her knowledge of charrettes, of which I have none. Um, what, what, what would be the advantages and disadvantages? Of having the the firm that worked on the Clemson next come in versus a new firm that hasn't been on onsite at all um to run the charrette? Um, are the reasons that one would be preferable to the, Andy mentioned time, but are there other things that would matter? In terms of a firm that's already been in and developed the plan that the shred really sprung from versus a new firm coming in?
Well, I think if you stick with the original firm, um, you know, they've already got, they've already done their homework and they've got a good background. They know where the community wants to go. Um, and I, I think that's a definite advantage. Because they don't have to get up to speed. Um, with a new firm, they are gonna have to get up to speed. You know, I didn't participate in the first charrette, so if it went well and everybody's really happy with them. I would suggest staying with them.
I don't think they did a charrette, Andy. Tell me if I'm wrong. I wasn't involved in that process. I don't know what they did.
Um, a charrette was not included in the original bid just because they didn't know that. That was a result of the actual project when they found it. That was a strategy that was recommended through their work. So if if that's the question that was asked, um, the shred wasn't intended originally, because we didn't know if a shred would be needed, but. They recommended that for that complex of an area, that would probably be the way to go.
Okay, but they've already done a lot of research and everything, correct? I mean, they developed the the drone footage and the presentation. That we all looked at.
Yeah, but yeah, that firm was the one who did all the initial research and looked, looked into the area. And because of its complexity, recommended that a charrette process be used for that particular area.
What is the reason suggested? I didn't quite understand it for for not using them?
Because. Um, council originally said that they would not consider them for additional work. Whoever was awarded the first project. Just because they just wanted to make sure that they were getting as completely deliverable as possible. Now you can look at this, I mean, a charrette wasn't in the existing scope. You could look at it as a change order, possibly. It gets a little hairy and from the optics of it. I I think just out of pure objectivity, I would recommend. Go ahead and do an equipped turnaround bid. And it's just a matter of if you're gonna entertain a proposal from development strategies or not.
Yeah, and I guess are, are you outlining the deliverables or are you just asking what the deliverables will be?
For the shred? We would just say, we just want, we just advertise a shred planning process for the uptown area and I'd include a copy of the white paper with the. The bid documents.
Okay, cause that that might be worth it to put it out and just see what deliverables that you get. And what their expertise is and what their experience has been. Um, and you know, keep them in there. That would be my recommendation, just because they are familiar, they've been here, um, and just to see what you get.
Larry?
I'm, I'm just curious, Andy, I guess there's a question for you. Are we having this discussion because of the clause that we had in the original contract? If, if that's it, okay, I understand it, but it seems to me that I'm not sure we're on legal ground. To exclude any organization from uh, you know, submitting their credentials for consideration. Other than the fact that we had that clause in the original contract. Is that why we're having this discussion, Andy?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure. All right. I I I I do agree that having, um, you know, the background and the information is is valuable. Um, I also. I see the uh advantage of having a fresh point of view as well. And I think the firms, you know, the, the, the other firms that actually applied and when we were just talking about. They could come up to speed quite rapidly, uh, and in fact have experience with the city in previous uh project. Uh, you know, so I, I feel like Billy Martin. I feel strongly both ways, uh, you know, uh. So I think there are advantages and disadvantages to either way, but I think uh I would not exclude. Or I would provide a waiver to the contract if we thought uh there was value to letting the development strategies apply.
Think the way you have your cake and eat it too, is we do an advertisement and you allow them to bid on it. And that way, if you decide not to go with them, you'll have a whole bunch of other reasons. That were brought up through the bid process to justify that decision and you'll, you'll know. You'll probably feel better about it in the end. Yeah.
Uh, I'm just curious, when you, when you look at these bids from people that have already done a lot of work previous. Are they, do they a lot of times come in as the lower bid? Uh, you know, I would think that because they've done so much background work. That they would be able, they would have an advantage and be able to, um, you know, come in a little bit cheaper than everybody else. So, you know, I don't know that for sure, but I'm just thinking that. You know, I kind of, I kind of agree with Larry too, that if you, if somebody can get up to speed real quickly. Um, you're gonna have a kind of a fresh face, fresh ideas. Um, you know, it, not to say it's bad to have the other folks come in, but. Um, it might be a, might not be a bad idea, um, you know, to do that. Um. And Larry, Billy Martin's my favorite all-time manager, so I just want to let you know that.
I liked him too, Todd.
Any other thoughts on that? Andy, did you get what you need?
Yeah, I just want to know if y'all are comfortable with me relaying to council that y'all discussed this. And it seems like um, y'all would prefer to advertise the job. See what other proposals are out there, what other people can do with a timeline, how quickly they get to speed, answer your questions. But allow development strategies to be part of that process. So you have all the alternatives to consider. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, thanks, Andy.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, the next thing we're going to do, I sent y'all an email a little bit late yesterday, is you may have done this before I was brought on board, but we're going to go look at the general recommendations from the white paper around this land use group. And I think based on sitting in on your discussions the last three or four weeks, I think y'all already have these in hand, I just kind of want confirmation that we're all on the same page moving forward. And maybe see some of these general recommendations are things that we can take forward to Planning Commission and City Council to approve or adopt while we're working through more of the specifics around the purpose-built student housing definition and some of the ordinances. So let me share my screen with y'all. These are directly from the white paper. These are the recommendations that fall in line with everything y'all have been considering. So I just want to kind of go through pretty quickly, get your comments or thoughts on these. And if you have ones that you want to flag and we can come back to and revise them, we can do that as well. So the first one comes from the small business area. And it is to use planned development agreements to create, require the creation of affordable retail space in new mixed-use development. And from what I've heard, I think this is something that you guys are moving forward with through the catalyst areas. Do y'all agree with that or have any other comments on that? Okay.
I have a question for Tom Wincop, if you've got just a second. From a, from a developer's perspective, if we had something in place when, say, campus view was built and they had so many parking spaces required per square foot of retail space, which is required now. What if those parking spaces were designated for public use and had to be available for the public and could not be used until the retail space was filled? That would be an incentive to fill the space?
Yeah, a couple of things I would say, I don't think retail-wise, you're required to build any parking in commercial. Now, I know the new hotel downtown was supposed to and they got an off-site kind of a valet situation, but I, I don't think, Andy, that, and Todd's on here, I, I don't think that, that that's required. My, my contention has always been that you should make a student housing developer, build, build parking one-to-one, even though you know that they're, all the students aren't going to use it. And, and basically 20% of the parking is set aside for public use. Because then you can have employees of businesses downtown that can use that parking. The city can pay for it, you know, the city can, you know, have a, have a small monthly amount that they pay. And then, you know, the, the, the users, that would, that would help relieve the public debt. Because a lot of times I think what happens is, in the, in the interest of not having more cars, which I agree with, you, you reduce the parking requirement by 30%. All that does really is, is allow a developer not to pay $25,000 per parking spot when they should either be using that money toward a public good, whether it's parking or transit or something else. So, you know, to answer your question, if, if, if retail, it's the same thing, if retail was required, they should, they should set it aside for public parking, that's what I think. I don't know if that answered what you're asking or not.
Yeah, and it brought up the other possibilities as well.
Um, I have to get off at, at, at nine o'clock unfortunately, but there's some things, you know, a few things in here that I, I don't, I don't see anything. You know, I, I think a lot of this stuff, as we said, is going to be passed on to Planning Commission or council. But I, I, I think a lot of this stuff, the devil's in the details with planning. And I'll, I, I get back on and hopefully get someone to give me a, you know, Shannon, maybe a, a, you know, kind of details of the rest of the conversation. So I think this is the important part and where we're headed toward the, the charrettes and everything else. That's where the, the meat's going to get on the bone, I think.
Tom, do you have anything you want to add before you leave this meeting today? Kind of in the general, on these general recommendations?
You know, I think the biggest thing is going to be, you know, you know, making sure that there's not any kind of end-around for a developer with student housing, because I'm, I'm actually, there's a, there's a conference in July that I may go to, really to do with some things I'm working on out at the pier. But to try to find out, what are, what are, what are all these folks doing now that they've been basically the barriers to entry in pretty much any downtown in a, in a college town has become difficult? What, what are they doing next? You know, so you don't have a situation where you're, you're kind of, you know, exploiting somewhat the commercial zone to get 65 feet and to kind of get around a PD. I think, I think not allowing commercial, I mean, not allowing residential as a conditional use in a commercial area, really then defaults you to a PD, which then you can add, there can be incentives. And a lot of these developers can come in and contribute money for transit or affordable housing. You could almost have kind of a fund to do that. And I'm going to try to find out, I'm going to try to find out exactly, you know, what, what's happening in other communities so that, you know, they'll, you know, it can help us make decisions. You know, it's just, that's what I'm going to try to do to report back. And I've been asking some of these questions as well, so that's really all I have to say.
Thanks, Tommy. Fran?
Just, yeah, just two quick clarifications and maybe Todd can help me. So the way I read, number one, it looks like now all mixed-use developments will have to be planned developments, if I'm reading the sentence correctly. And that's a big step. And then I'm not sure the meaning of the word affordable retail space, affordable is a tough word to use. But does this mean that all development mixed-use will have to now be planned development?
That is what is being proposed there and that is what is in the ordinance that is before council, that y'all are banning mixed-use citywide, except if done as a planned development. So that, that's what came out of this committee and what we had the public hearing on the other week, or last, last Monday, and what y'all will be voting on on June 7th will be eliminating mixed-use citywide and that the only way it would be allowed would be part of a PD.
Right, and then that PD will have to include the, the, the definition and implementation of affordable retail space.
I, I would agree that, that, you know, Shannon and I talked a little bit about this early on, about just kind of the process of taking the ideas that come from, from the efforts of all the various committees and how it, how it becomes, how it gets implemented. And that I think that today what she's looking at is to say, here are the ideas, once council blesses, it'll come back through the cycle again, where staff will then start with trying to draft language to take this idea and figure out how to put it into a, you know, a legally enforceable, codified set of standards that we will then take to the Planning Commission to approve and then ultimately for council to vote on. And so you're correct that if this is the direction the council wants to go, the staff would then have to come up with some kind of language and formula to satisfy the intention that is on this statement here of affordable retail space. I have no idea what that would look like, Fran, but, you know, the first step is to be given clear direction that that's what you want us to create. And then we'll go to school on that and figure out how, how, you know, put this into an enforceable document.
So then just very quickly, Shannon, I know you want to get along. I, I would suggest starting this, number one, with the word require and not even to use planned development agreements, only because if that's approved at our next meeting, that's already in place, the, the planned development. If it's not approved at our next meeting, I assume we would still want to require creation of affordable retail space. So I think if we don't worry about the planned development agreements and just say require the creation, it doesn't matter whether or not the planned development requirement, the change is approved at our next meeting. Anyway, I think it'd just be easier to do that.
So something like this, just require the creation of affordable retail space?
Right, right.
Okay, is everybody okay with that? I don't hear anything and I don't see any hands raised, so we're going to move on to the next one. So this one comes out of the housing group too, but it's just that when you're looking at those catalyst areas, you're going to try to incorporate affordable and workforce housing into those catalyst areas. Again, either using, using planned development agreements and public funding where needed. And I know that has been a discussion when we've looked at some of the catalyst areas, especially around the triangle area. Are y'all still kind of in agreement that this is the way you'd like things to move forward? Peter?
Yeah, I know there's been a lot of talk about affordable housing, seems to be very few definitions and tangible examples. Could somebody give me a tangible example of what that actually means? I know it's like 30% of your, you know, your housing utilities, but what does that actually look like in a planned development?
Todd, can you comment on that?
It's a, it's a fairly complex question, Peter. The, the, the two things, I mean, you're not, I'm assuming you're not saying, what does it look like physically, but like?
Yeah, how, how is this set up?
Yeah. There, there are a couple of things, and this is something staff is kind of grappling with, trying to understand what this, you know, what, what the various Clemson ex committees are trying to accomplish. That as we're, as we're picturing this, that a typical planned development is like Patrick Square. And so over there, you've got a commercial district, you've got all the regular housing, and now they're building townhomes and across from the retirement center over there, they're building villas that are smaller units, some smaller lots. And in a, in a, I use that as an example. So a, a planned development could say you've got a commercial component, you've got your housing for the masses. And then, and then this area over here, like at Patrick Square where the townhouses are, we're going to build housing and offer it at sub-market rate. What your hope is in a community is that affordable housing, you don't drive by and say, we're housing, because to me that would be failure, that you don't want it to look or feel different than anybody. It's more of an economically driven component. But to accomplish that, you do often have to make it smaller or make it, it might not be, you know, a stone-faced structure because of the cost that your, your limits of materials and size are, go hand-in-hand with making it affordable. So the way it would happen is that if, and alternatively, and we don't think this is a, a successful model for Clemson, is that if you take one of the catalyst areas close to campus where we're trying to attract student housing, and, well, at least that was a recommendation from the white paper, you're not likely going to be able to say, well, let's have 10% of these units be affordable and then have a family want to move into that student complex. I, I see it more as a, this applicable, not in an individual mixed-use building, though in urban areas that, that does occur. But it, I don't see that working in Clemson. I see this more for planned developments that are a, the way they were generally intended by the, by the state when, when that, that was, that, that zoning tool was created, that it would be a tract of land with multiple types of uses on it. The current thinking, as I can gather from Clemson next, is that an individual building will be considered a planned development. And so that's something we're trying to get our heads around as to how that really works, because that is not the way typically that has been applied in the state of South Carolina.
Okay, yeah, that helps, I guess I've been trying to get my mind around it. I'm for the idea, I'm just wondering, how does this actually work out? Because there's just lots of social questions.
And there are other ways too, Peter, that, that instead of requiring it as part of a PD, which may be exactly what this group wants to do, that I think there are missed opportunities because there'll be a lot of other developments that will not occur by way of a PD, because I think the restrictions being placed on PDs are probably going to, may serve as a deterrent for development, but that by right, that we've drafted a voluntary inclusionary zoning ordinance that we've shared with the Housing Committee that would provide incentives. Again, you know, it's trying to determine where we want to go as a group, as a city, and, and recognize where do we have a big stick, where can we force people? And, and where do we need to entice them to come? And when it comes to making developers fund affordable housing, we do not have a big stick. We have to, because we cannot force that, we have to entice them. I, I see a lot of the affordable housing being in some of these other areas further away from campus, land costs are lower and that, and, but I'm, I'm, I know I'm Shannon, I've taken this into the weeds and I'll, I'll pull this out. But, but Peter, if you want to talk more about affordable housing, please don't hesitate to call, because it is a complex matter and I, I want you to have as clear an understanding as possible. So if you have to me offline, I'll be glad to take time to, to talk about it more.
Why don't we, like the first one, just remove the planned development agreements from this? So we're less specific. Yes, we want to incorporate affordable and workforce housing in the catalyst areas, using public funding where needed.
I have a comment in terms of, I, I know we've had quite a few, quite a bit of questions on the planned development agreements. I think the tenor of those agreements, and Tom alluded to it earlier, and I think we've seen developers are skillful at finding workarounds. Okay, and in part, oftentimes, if you don't have it in there, then they somehow are able to find a workaround. And I think in part, those planned development agreements, early on, were suggested because not having them then allows developers, just like Todd just mentioned, seeing one building as a planned development, but not part of a larger comprehensive plan for an area as, for instance, the Patrick Square. You can have these different uses in Patrick Square, but it's part of a larger comprehensive plan, this planned development, as opposed to each development a standalone. And so you get a hodgepodge, and part of the conversation with Development Strategies earlier is that historically, that's what has happened in Clemson, that a developer comes in with a plan, with their plan for the land that they've assembled and put it down, they get approval for it, but it not part of a larger comprehensive development plan. And so the planned development ensures that what happens in this space development plan. And so the plan development ensures that what happens in this space is part of this thought through comprehensive plan for this area, and it's it it fits together as opposed to separate developments in a space. So I think that was sort of the tenor of the conversation about the need for plan development as opposed to individual ad hoc developments all around town. And so the catalyst areas and this discussion about the plan development, that was my understanding early on.
Thank you, Ken. Anybody else? Add the plan development back in.
I'm more comfortable with it being in there in the wording.
Okay. Okay. And I'm going to leave these with you guys to think about over the next week, and we won't finalize these until our next meeting. So I think there'll be plenty of time for you guys to relook at these and send more comments. The next ones, I'm pretty sure we've already covered. I just want to make sure I get the okay from you guys. They fall under student and nonstudent housing, so that yes, we would want to cultivate student housing development in specific catalyst areas. So this is very general. This is not naming which catalyst area we'd want to put it in, but that yes, we would look at those for in some of those specific catalyst areas. That we would establish purpose-built student housing as its own category in the zoning ordinance. We're already working towards that, so I think that's something you guys all agree on. And in priority catalyst areas, use the PD process and homeowners associations to target new housing options to nonstudents where desired. And I think that's also being discussed in that discussion of the catalyst areas, different types of housing, nonstudent housing in those catalyst areas. Are you guys, are there any objections to those three? Kind of the committee approving, yes, those are three general areas we're working towards? All right, I don't hear any any objections. All right, this is what been working on most recently, so I think these are all things you approve of as well, just wanted to double check. Again, so in the white paper, making purpose-built student housing a separate use within the zoning ordinance was obviously a priority, because they put it in there twice as a recommendation. So it's good that we're moving towards that, if that's what we want. The second one on here, consider removing high-density multifamily even as mixed use from all non-residential districts. That is, I believe, part of the ordinance that City Council is already considering. I hear any discussion on that, or everybody's comfortable with that moving forward?
I don't, I don't know that we're considering removing it. I think we're considering a process that has to be followed for it to happen. I'm not sure on that. I think that's where the PD comes in. Todd may remember better. But I don't think it was to remove it. I think it was to change the process for it to be approved. Todd, if you're still with us, maybe maybe I'm misremembering that.
No, it depends on, I guess, I guess how you want to view it or or determined that y'all are removing it. You're eliminating as a use as a by right use. Your, a plan development allows you to do anything. You could build a ninety-story, you know, troll, but you can do whatever you wanted to there and that under a planned development. And so but you're allowing, you you are, you are removing it as a use throughout all the commercial districts and that but you are, from what I can gather, open to the idea of allowing residential as, well, you would have to allow residential if a plan development was done in one of those areas. But so again, it's, I I you're correct, that that I I think that the, there is still a vehicle, a means by which a mixed use occur on land that is currently zoned commercial. If it's a planned development, it is no longer zoned commercial, because you have to rezone the property to do it as a planned development. But as long as it's commercial, it's you cannot have residential in it.
It, tell me the word, we're removing as a conditional use, a special, what was it right now, conditional use?
No, well, it is conditional use, but you're 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 removing it by right. And so right now that it it's the the property owner has the right to build mixed use as long as they use the 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 standards that council adopted and that are in the ordinance. Y'all are removing that use altogether. And so so I said, there there will not be any residential high or low density in in any commercial districts in the city ever, until you change that ordinance again.
So it's not just high-density multifamily?
It's it's all, it's all, it's considered removing residential.
Right.
At least, well, I know Shannon, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but the effect of the ordinance that we had the public hearing on and y'all getting ready to vote on removes all residential from commercial, from all commercial. And so high-density multifamily would be a subset of residential, but it would also be if somebody wanted to put a loft on top of Tiger Town Tavern or two, you know, two lofts over Hubbard Young, they could not do that either.
Okay, so what what Shannon is showing us right now is what was in the white papers. So that's not what we're talking what we're, what councils are proposing. This is just the white papers proposal.
Right, so I'm just asking you guys if you want to leave these in, remove these. Most of these, you've already made progress towards, so that's why I thought we'd be able for us to move through it quickly. Andy?
I was going to say, is this where we can maybe instead of saying you don't, you remove it by right, you create standards that make it very onerous to have purpose-built student housing, and if you did have commercial available in there, the standards would promote it so that the type of housing would be attractive to normal human habitation rather than the unusual student type of housing arrangement. And then if you allow the purpose-built, the carrot would be, you don't have to jump through all these hoops if you do it in the areas where we have determined it is desirable.
Let me think about where we would want to add that discussion, because right now we're in this part of the white paper that's about the overlays. Can I write that down? We can come back to that, Andy?
Yeah, I'll email it to you.
All right. So we've also discussed the overlay districts. You guys have approved creating overlays for West Downtown, East Downtown, Clemson Triangle, and Clemson Crossing. This is not saying you approve what the white paper says should be in those catalyst areas, but just that we should look at those as catalyst areas. So you guys have walked through all that and approved that. And the Uptown District, create a systematic process for regulating and planning for future development. I'm not sure if that's an outcome of the charrette process, or if you'd like to see that as an outcome of the charrette process. Or we can highlight that to come back to it. But I think that I know you've discussed that you do want the charrette for the Uptown District, so we can come back to this as that. And then you've also discussed for the Far North, Near North, and Paculat Milliken to continue using the current tools that you have for those areas. Everybody still comfortable with that? All right. The last couple, just to run through these. The white paper recommended hiring a deputy administrator for development to facilitate the catalyst area projects and leading redevelopment planning in those catalyst areas. Don't know if that's something you all want to discuss right now, or you kind of want to table? Fran?
So as actually expect to our earlier discussion from our first group, I guess it depends what we're approving. So I I I'm not ready to say we should hire a deputy administrator for development. I'm certainly willing to consider that as we gather more information, but if we're asking whether we approve of that recommendation, I I would have to say I don't, because I don't know enough about it yet. So I think it depends, Shannon, on what what it is, is that exactly where we're acknowledging if we say yes to this, because we have other hiring needs. The report itself has several. We discussed some options earlier, so I don't know that I'm at least ready to say, yes, this is, I recommend this, as opposed to the earlier ones, I I was okay with recommending them.
Larry, do you have anything different to add, or are you okay with us tabling this until we gather more information?
Yeah, I think we should table. It's the same discussion as Fran just said, but I also, I don't believe that the Clemson Next Committee was committed to any of those three positions. They were merely allowing them to go forward as a thought, not as an action.
Sounds good. So we will table those. Those can be things we circle back around to as we get further into the process. The last two come from the student and nonstudent housing. These are recommendations that the Housing Committee also forwarded, so I just wanted to make y'all aware of these, because these will impact your committee too, moving forward. To continue to utilize and strengthen the rental housing program as a tool of mitigating the encroachment of student rental into all residential neighborhoods. So the Housing Committee is sending that as a recommendation forward to the Planning Commission and City Council. And then develop and implement a process to maintain an accurate database of student housing capacity and planned occupancy. I think y'all should be aware of that and keep that in mind going forward, that that's also a recommendation coming from the Housing Committee, that it would be super helpful for us to know what's our current student housing capacity, what's the planned occupancy when we consider the catalyst areas moving forward. And they also added a third one to this moving, this morning, moving forward, which was to also keep a similar database for affordable housing and workforce housing. Do y'all have any concerns with those? If not, I'm going to go ahead and write these up, kind of the ones that you are comfortable moving forward with, and I'll send them out for everybody to review, and then maybe we can get the the general recommendations moving on to the Implementation Committee and Planning Commission while you continue to work through the specifics. Is everybody okay with that, that process moving forward?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we have about six minutes left. We can either take a look at our purpose-built student housing definition, or is there anything else the committee wants to bring up to discuss this morning? Okay. So this is in the drive, our working definition of purpose-built student housing. I found one from Baltimore that I thought was useful for us, and I talked with staff about what we could and couldn't do based on some of our state regulations. So what we had started with was describing kind of what the unit looked like. So each bedroom must have a bathroom, only accessible by the bedroom. No bathrooms are accessible via a bedroom. All bedrooms open to a common area. We discussed that an important component of this definition is that they were leased by the bed basis. But that's not something that, from what I understand, Andy and Todd, that the city can require a developer do. So that's not something we can include in our definition. We can include things like purpose-built student housing is designed and marketed to be used for the primary purpose of housing students, undergraduate and graduate. It's not located on the campus of an institution. It's privately owned or owned by the institution. I don't know if we can specify how many units it has in it. But the other things that they specify in here that were interesting, that also were in line with what the committee has been discussing are things like all the buildings, she'll have a transit stop providing transportation to area institutions and contain storage for other modes of transportation. Do y'all have any thoughts on this? Are you comfortable with moving forward on this, having staff add to their current definition and bring something more polished back to you? How would you like to move forward with this definition of purpose-built student housing?
Shannon, what about thinking in terms of a list of things and 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 the category would be having meeting two or more, whatever these criteria? So you can keep the rent by the bed thing in there, but it's not going to be, it's just going to be used to describe it, and it could be one of the options that would describe it.
All right, create a list. The development us meet. Let's just say two or more of these criteria. In other regulations that I looked at, some of those included the amenities that were there. So they kind of included a list of amenities and said, if you had these, you were considered, you could be considered student housing, all right, leasing arrangement.
Possibly study areas.
Study areas. Would that be an amenity?
It should be.
So this could include the design, like the layout that we've been discussing. Andy and Todd, is that, would would that be applicable? Would we be able to apply something like that where we're not requiring them? We're just saying that student housing meets two or more of these?
I like it in addition to, because it kind of helps you determine if it walks like a duck and looks like a duck, and maybe it's a duck.
In addition to in addition to the design criteria, what's our initial criteria going to be? What would make sense, like from an, you know, codes perspective?
Maybe just say like the typical mixed-use development, these types of criteria are often found in purpose-built student housing.
Okay. Do we want to start with this kind of that purpose-built student housing is designed and marketed to be used for the primary purpose of student housing students? Is that an okay place to start? And then in addition to will usually meet to some number of these criteria that follow? Okay.
I don't know. It was a good idea to have some descriptors in there that go beyond dry code language.
Okay.
So just just to clarify, is the purpose for doing this so we can say these kind of things can only be built in these areas? Is that, is that why we're spending all this time doing this, to say ultimately, if you want to have this kind of building, it has to be, it can only be in these places?
I think it's because in the white paper, they recommend two or three times that you create a specific definition or zoning criteria for purpose-built student housing. In the first step, correct me if I'm wrong, but the first step would be deciding how you're going to consider something student housing.
Okay. All right, that helps a little bit. I mean, I like what what you said earlier, I think it was Baltimore, where not only did you do this, we're doing now, but they're also saying the things that student housing have to include, like the bus stop within a certain area, a place for bicycles. And I think that's, that's a little different reason for having it. I think that's having it or those pieces are to have student housing that is contributing to community, or at least not taking away from the community. So I think that's a different purpose, but 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 this part now, the design, is more just to say the places where student housing are permitted, this is what that has to look like.
Right, and I think that's what Baltimore does. So the first part of their ordinance is, this is what, this is how we decide what is student housing.
Right.
Like these, this A through F, this is how we decide if it's student housing or not. And then if it is purpose-built student housing, this is where it's allowed. These are the following additional regulations, and that's where your transit stop comes in. So.
So here, but here, here's where I get a little stuck on this, though. So let's say someone wants to build a, what I call an off-campus dormitory, which would be student housing, all right? But it doesn't meet these criteria. In other words, it doesn't have one bathroom per student. It's a regular old apartment building in the way we know it. That could still be built anywhere, but be converted into student housing based on who you market it to and allow live there, right? So it doesn't meet the design specifications, but it, but something that something that's multiple-family housing, a large apartment building could still be marketed to students and de facto be student housing, but not do this one bedroom and everything else.
Fran, this is Todd, and you raise a good point. And one of the approaches that we were thinking might, might be good for the city and might address what this group is interested in is that assuming that the, you know, the white paper, that those catalyst areas, that there reach some agreement, that those are the areas that we want to try to promote stu- purpose-built student housing. And that in order to do that, we provide the incentives to make those areas adjacent to campus, the high-density areas. That in my, and it's, staff has been trying to, to, you know, crystal ball this and best prepare for what y'all want us to do. That with that assumption, that y'all want to follow some version of the white paper, put the density there close to campus, that would be the only place where purpose-built student housing would be allowed, that that we see. All other housing in Clemson, we would be writing new standards that would allow it to be built or require it to be built with additional closet space, with additional ability to be repurposed for student function, whether immediately or 10 years down the road. That will still not disallow a property owner from renting to a student because we don't have a legal right to say you cannot rent to students. But what it does do is it will create, moving forward, a housing inventory that has much greater flexibility than the multifamily that is being built today. And for for all the areas other than the catalyst areas, and for the catalyst areas, it would require them to say, hey, we want the student housing here because it's the lowest negative impact on the city and and more ecologically sustainable, et cetera, et cetera. But everywhere else that you, you're going to have to build in a way that 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 I could retire into, that a graduate student could live in, that a a non, any kind of non-student family would find a product that would suit them. So the idea is that you, that for this to, I think, to accomplish what what I'm hearing Clemson Next wanting to do would be both of these things. Require and allow and promote purpose-built student housing in one area and require all other areas to be built in a more flexible, sustainable manner to where it's not being built just for students. But they would go hand in hand.
Hey, guys, that was a lot today. We're five minutes over already. Does anybody have anything else they want to to add? And if you think of anything you want to add to the agenda for next week, or that you'd like people to consider, shoot me an email, let me know. And we'll pick up with this next week. All right.
Thanks, Shannon. See you, everybody.